Village and we're excited about it. And with the new resolution you're considering, we're very concerned. We have two new companies coming into our township. They've leased little over thirty-six hundred acres for solar panels, knowing they didn't have gravel roads because of the dust and the concern with that. So we've got great concern if they're moving forward, if we do go back to very much gravel, which it's a five-hundred-million-dollar project, which would be a lot of money for the county and our township. The board has gone publicly, any money we would receive from the taxes as far as the township, we will put to roads. So we're looking with the mill we have, just devoted, our township has been putting in a mill to a mill and a half, last year was a mill and a half, and any additional would all go to our roads. Our question being if we turn it back in the spring, the county road commission gave me a list of eleven miles in our roads they want to put back to gravel over the next three years. That's one-third of my local roads. If you put them back, what's the cost going to be to me, the township, to put them back to paved roads? At three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a mile, and I assume that's what it would take to put them back, there's no way we could ever do it. My concern is the loss of business we'll have if this goes through because I know it's going to be upsetting to these solar companies. I have no doubt about it. We've been negotiating with them for almost two years and this is, you know, their concern about cleaning and the whole bit. And I know they'll be approaching the road commission to work on bonding or whatever they have to do for the roads. But my biggest concern is we put them back, a third of my roads that they've identified now, when we did an audit in two thousand and sixteen, the average phaser rating in our roads, including the primary, was two-point-six. At two, they should be going back. I understand that. But if we go back, our property values will go down. The people that bought these houses, and we've had some nice new homes built in our area in the last five years, they bought them because they are on paved roads. So these people, anyone spending twenty to seventy thousand dollars for a car or truck does not want to drive on a gravel road. And my biggest concern is what it can do to our community, what's it going to go to us in bringing new business in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone? All right. We'll move on. Elected and appointed county officials' comments. Anyone? You have the treasurer or sheriff? John? Any comments, John? Midgley, would you like to comment?
Well, only from the comment that the eleven miles shows up on the phaser rating, but that's not the intent of the road department to try to change any of those back to gravel, especially at this point. The resolution that will come before you a little bit later this evening calls to return some roads to gravel, only it's a pilot program for the rest of two thousand and nineteen, and requires the signed agreement with the township that they're on board, that they want that road returned to gravel, and the road department would then pay the entire cost of crushing it back to gravel.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Special order of business, we have none. Consent agenda, we have several small items on there. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda for the August fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
Have support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Special committee workshop board reports. Nobody?
Not today.
Nobody? All right. I'll give an update. Our nine-one-one board met on Tuesday where we received our audited, our audit for the past year, clean financial position, clean audit, which is always good to hear, and in good shape. We do have some issues coming up with MERS potentially in our retirement, our pension plans, looking at keeping those at a hundred percent. So we'll get more information in September coming up with our actuarial studies as well. So other than that, everything's moving along nicely. Anybody else? Okay. Unfinished business, we have none. We have four items tonight for new business, and I'll turn it over to County Administrator Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll highlight one exciting thing that happened last week. On August eighth, the Firekeepers Local Revenue Sharing Board met to finalize the grant awards for their Tier Four discretionary grant process. They allocated three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars, which had accumulated over a few years since the previous grant process was done in two thousand and sixteen. So out of this year's five-point-seven million-plus accumulated funds, they allocated three-hundred-and-thirty thousand, and we received thirty-two applications. One was withdrawn. They awarded almost the entire three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand to twenty-three projects, including some of them that were submitted by our own county government departments. But anywhere from one-thousand dollars all the way up to the limit, which was twenty-five thousand dollars this year. Commissioner King is on that board on behalf of the county, and I thought they did a wonderful job reaching unanimous consent, which is required to give money to projects from everything from the sheriff's office to parks to our, some of our specialty courts, circuit court clerks. So there's a lot of really nice projects that will be funded this year and into next year from that funding. I think the, there's a few board and committee reports in my update report that will come out tonight. Summit Point Board met last week and accepted our audited financial statements. We had a new audit firm this year, BDO, and it was actually the first year since the county became involved with the Summit Point Board and since we had a new CEO that we've received a clean audit, but also a clean audit without any internal controls findings. So it was a nice milestone. And then Michigan Municipal Services Authority, MMSA, that's the board that I was appointed by the governor, the former governor, and then recently appointed as the chair. Our executive committee met last week, and we are in transition with our CEO who resigned to become an assistant city manager. So I'm now the chair of a board that has no CEO, and if you've ever done that, it's a lot of work. So we're trying to replace the CEO and also hold down the fort in his absence. And that concludes my report. We actually have six items under new business tonight. Two of them are for information only. So first one for new business is item twelve B one. That starts on page forty-five of the electronic packets. And this is a formal bid award on behalf of the Health Department by our purchasing office, sorry, I had that wrong, Road Department on behalf of the purchasing, no, it was Health Department. All right, let me start over. Page fifty-three. So this is the lab water testing bid award for the Health Department. They used to use a company out of Kalamazoo. This is a formal bid because the amount is estimated to be twenty-five thousand, exceeding our threshold of twenty thousand. And so purchasing did a formal RFP for a company that was qualified to do drinking water testing for the Health Department. They had to meet state and federal guidelines, and there was only one bid response, Alliance Analytical Labs out of Cooperstown, I think it's Grand Rapids area.
Yes.
And so we are requesting that you approve them to begin this work immediately. And any questions Brad Wilcox can answer about the process.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the one-year contract with the option for five one-year extensions with Alliance Analytical Laboratories Incorporated to provide laboratory water testing services to the Calhoun County Public Health Department Environmental Division as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? All those in, all right, need a roll call because we're spending money.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item, twelve B two, is on page one-twenty-two. This is, in the format that you've seen before, this is one of those local road improvement agreements that we've been bringing throughout the season. This one is with Athens Township, and it relates to not doing road construction, but applying brine on gravel roads. So the county covers at our cost the first two applications of brine on local roads, gravel roads for all the townships. In this case, if townships want a third application or a fourth application, they can request that, and we will do that at the cost of the township. In this case, we have agreement that Athens Township Board already approved, I think it was back in June, to do all of their local roads, which equals about fifteen miles. And the cost is roughly three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars a mile for a total of five-thousand-seven-seven-seven. And we ask for the board's approval since this is a formal agreement.
All right. Can I have a motion to approve the agreement for the third brine application for Athens Township as presented?
So moved.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take your role.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Twelve B three starts page one-twenty-four. This is a request that, to purchase from Berry County their allocation of federal highway funds. So counties get an allocation either through BCATs or through our rural task force for federal funding. It does come with strings attached. You have to follow some pretty stringent procurement and monitoring and reporting guidelines. And some of counties, particularly the smaller ones, have realized that that's, it's really not efficient and effective for them to accept these funds and the contracts that go with them. And they'd really rather just have the discretion to use their funding as they see fit for smaller projects. So in the past, I think at least twice, we have done this, where we have offered to purchase those federal aid funds, and they offer it to us at a discount. So that's what's in it for us. This will get us seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars worth of funding at a cost, at a discount of fifteen percent. So we will be able to save a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars, or I'll say it differently, we would be able to do a hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars more of work with the same amount of money out of our budget. And what that does for Berry County is, gives them our funding, which doesn't come with any of those strings attached. So they can, they can use it however their asset management plans dictate. And this is not just a program we made up, but the state actually has a program that's allowable for counties to do. And I would like to ask John, since you're here, to add anything you would like to that, what we might be doing with the money?
What we're thinking, what we're planning on using it for is Bellevue Road in Combs Township from Thirteen Mile Road to the Eaton County line. That finishes that piece that we started, I think, last year. Sorry, that was before I was here.
Two years ago.
But that finishes that road up. They estimate the project cost on that of being about nine-hundred thousand. So, and there's still match, our match would go against that money coming in. If it's not used for that, we have some other projects we can put that money into. So it will certainly be used in the county.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the agreement with Berry County Road Commission to permit Calhoun County to purchase federal highway aid dollars at a reduced rate during the calendar year two thousand and twenty, and to authorize the board chair to sign the agreement, subject to minor modifications acceptable to the administrator, controller, and corporate council?
So moved.
Support.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? John, I just want to point out that these are only, there's only designated, certain designated roads these can be used on. They can't just be used on a county road.
That's correct. This will be a contract led through the Michigan Department of Transportation for a project we undertake.
All right. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take your role.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So John, you can stay up here. The next item is also on behalf of the Road Department entered by our corporation counsel, Jim Dyer. And as was mentioned earlier, we know that the townships have a lot of concern, or had a lot of concern about the county board deciding what roads should be turned to gravel and actually executing that work without your agreement. And so as you probably remember, the new policy, the road infrastructure failure policy that we originally proposed was tabled. It has not been brought back yet for board approval. We had a meeting with all of the township supervisors, and John received that input, and we're working on modifying that along with Policy five-oh-nine, which was also discussed at that meeting. We know there's a lot of concern about the wording on both. Both of those we're planning to bring back at a point where they can be implemented for a fresh start with next year. In the meantime, we're not trying to change any of that right now. We're simply trying to ask for a waiver of the old Policy five-oh-nine, being what it is, and it's all of the wording that's there, a waiver so that we don't have to require townships to pay for their roads to be turned to gravel. And it only applies to townships that are requesting and have approved before we approve an agreement to turn a certain road to gravel. So just for this year, if you happen to be a township that wants to turn a road to gravel, we want to do that.
Yes.
If it makes sense, and we want to pay for it. It's kind of a pilot program, just to see how that goes and get some work done that will improve public safety. And we have that in our budget, partly because we have increased state funding from this year. So it doesn't, we understand the concern that's out there about the old policy and about the new policy that was tabled. And this really doesn't apply to townships that don't want their roads turned to gravel. It is not anything to do with us making that decision. It's only responding to requests of townships so that we can work with them and get some of that work done this year. And John, what do you want to add? Do you want to talk about what townships you've had discussions with?
We've, it's just been general discussions. There's no actual roads that's been selected or discussions like that. But Athens, Burlington, Fidonia, Leroy, and Newton are the five I can think of that we've talked to, expressed some interest. That doesn't mean they're going to go forward with something at this point. But I was at Fidonia's road committee meeting a week ago, and just in general, I said, what would you take? Something they would consider? So I guess that's kind of the background of this. We'd like, all we're really asking for is, is Policy five-oh-nine right now is really not clear on this issue. It mentions crushing a road if you're doing a major reconstruct and that type of thing. Really doesn't mention what happens if that's all you want to do is crush a road. So this is just, I'd like to do a pilot project, see how it works. If we get there, and, you know, it may end up that none of the townships come forward. But at least this gives me the opportunity to say, if you're interested, the road department will pay for it.
And we have, you said, have money to do, about five miles total?
Yeah. I talked to our accountant and asked, I said, what, you know, what can the budget handle without getting us any kind of an issue? And she said about seventy-five-thousand dollars. And that's, we figure about fifteen thousand dollars a mile to crush a road back to gravel.
Okay. Let's get a motion on the table, then. I think I'll read the entire resolution so everybody understands it, because I think to say just as presented. Whereas the county road department has been contacted by several townships who are interested in returning some roads back to gravel, and whereas board policy five-oh-nine requires financial participations for some source other than the road department to perform this work, and whereas the road department proposes a variance from board policy five-oh-nine, which would allow crushing the roadway and adding gravel at one-hundred percent road department cost, and whereas the proposed variance program would be limited to the two thousand and nineteen budget year, and whereas a signing of the waiver shall require an agreement be approved by the applicable township board and signed by the appropriate township official with subsequent approval by the managing director of the road department. Whereas the managing director shall report to the board, County Board of Commissioners concerning the number of waivers granted and their effectiveness. Now therefore be it resolved that the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners grants a variance allowing the return of gravel as outlined above. Have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
And support. Any discussion? Commissioner Miller?
I think if a township is going to come out and request it were to be turned back to gravel, it's a great thing. I think this five-oh-nine policy does need to be rewritten and looked at. I think until then, I have no problem going on a case-by-case basis. The township requests the letter to us asking for a section of road to be ground up. I think it should go on a case-by-case basis for our approval. But until then, I can't support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I've received just in the past, I don't know, forty-five minutes or so, my, the amount of feedback I've gotten from township folks is quadrupled, including some public comments here. So I just have more questions on the matter. I'd like to move to table it.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Have a motion?
Get support.
Get support. We'll vote on the motion to table the resolution. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote.
Commissioner King?
No.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Faget?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
No. Motion fails. Motion fails, is a tie.
Back to discussion.
So go back to discussion on the original motion. Commissioner King?
Thank you, Chair. Please be. Once again, I'm just, it's shocking to me that there's any, that there's some thing here where people think there's devil in the details. This goes through two thousand and nineteen. It's only townships that are coming to us. After five-oh-nine was tabled, the failed road policy was tabled in the first place, my townships came to me and said, what was this all about? When the group of townships sent out their correspondence with bad information, they came to me and said, what's this about? I gave them the information. We talked about it, and they're like, this makes sense to us. I mean, can we get some of those roads done now? Would you be willing to do that now? Put them in touch with the road department. It's only townships that are coming to the county. It's also retro to the townships that agreed to crush up the roads a month or two ago. They're not going to have to pay that ninety-five-hundred dollars or whatever it is.
Each.
What?
Each.
Each.
Yes.
Both governing bodies have to agree with it. That means we still have to agree to this too, even though we're wait, we're doing a variance on this waiver. And not to mention, so I heard Mr. Porter, right? I heard Mr. Porter's comment about the eleven miles. It's, it might be eleven miles of two-rated on the phaser rating roads within his township. But listen, we all can sit up here. We know what we drive on. We're not, failed and failed are two different things. A failed road is not the same as a road that is failed and is unsafe to the motoring public. You can have a road that is safe to the motoring public by definition of Act fifty-one in the court that is still failed as it relates to phaser rating. It's, you know, so this, this, that's why I support this. My townships want it. My townships want some roads turned back to gravel. It seems, it seems like there's, there was zero confusion here. It's perplexing. The only, it's just, the only thing I feel bad about is all the townships that are supporting it that aren't here. So you got primarily, what I see is the east side of the county not, not, not supporting it for some reason. I don't, I don't understand.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, I just wanted to take a second to explain why I didn't want to table it and why I voted no to table. I voted no to table because I think that if there are townships that are here that are somewhat willing to work with it, that have asked for their assistance, we just owe them an explanation. We owe them a resolution rather than tabling it. So I just wanted to take the time to explain that.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Thank you, Chair. Well, you know, first and foremost, I'd just be very honest with you. Part of the issue with the east side of the county, because I know we're always continued beat up all the time by, you know, various comments, but quite frankly, it's a evolution of trust. The east side of the county doesn't have a level of trust with the county road department, and that's not against John, and I've stated it very clearly to John. So part of the deal that I've been trying to do is develop relationships so that there's that building of trust. So it's, yeah, you're going to see all the east side here because there's a sensitivity to it. And I think we owe it to ourselves to make sure that when we put a policy on the table, whatever it may be, let's get that policy in place before we start making subjugated additions or subtractions to it, i.e. the original policy was brought forth that we tabled. That's something we should be working on and developing one collaboratively with the townships to be able to put forth something. And then if we want to do something of this nature, let's do that. But let's get the policy in place first before we go off and want to be subjugating and moving in different directions of that. So again, I think it's important. I mean, kudos certainly to Sheridan Township for passing your road village. I know you guys have tried it several times, and you were finally successful, and that's a congratulations certainly to the people. But accompanantly upon what I hear is, is just that lack of trust. And I think John has done a great job of reaching out with our townships, with my townships, and he has started to build that. But it's a process. It's not something that comes on overnight. So I mean, I would also offer the fact as Commissioner Smith is tabling it, not because we're wanting it to go away, but I just want to make sure that we have all of the information that we need so that we can make a real decision, that we can communicate it effectively versus trying to communicate something in a five-day period where if we had several weeks to be able to communicate and have those discussions, I think we would end up in a much better situation. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller?
I just want to make a statement. I think this is a good thing if we can grind some roads back up to gravel. But until this policy is rewritten, it needs to be on a case-by-case basis. We do a lot of roads, federally projects, we vote on case-by-case. If a township submits a letter to us requesting a road to be ground up, I'm in favor of that. Until this policy gets rewritten, that's the way I think it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. I do have some comments. First of all, I understand the case-by-case thought, but we're nearing the end of the road construction season. And our next meeting is not until September. That may be too short of a timeframe to be able to get these townships who want to do something this year, potentially, clearly at their own direction, at their request. And it's, it's a good thing for them. It's a good thing for us because what it does is, in the long run, will save us dollars. We're trying to fix roads right now that are not fixable. We're trying to maintain roads that are not maintainable in the way that they were built and the level they've reached. And I, Tommy, you've fixed those, tried to fix those roads for years. You know what I'm talking about. So I think, I understand the thought about case-by-case, but if we just say blanketly and go back now and say to the two townships that are covered within your two districts, Commissioner Tompkins and Miller, we're not going to require you to pay those, that ninety-five-hundred dollars apiece as part of this motion. I think that's a good thing. That's a good way to build relationships and a good way to build trust. relationships and a good way to build trust and a good way to show that we're going to follow through with what we intend to do. So I don't, this is a township-driven initiative. This is not driven by the road department. This was in discussions with, if we gave you this tool, would this, is this something that will interest you? And that's what both of you were after a couple of months ago, was township-driven decisions. So I'm, I think this is a step in the right direction to help cover that base. We do have the information. We know what the cost is. We know what the process is. They have to agree to it. They have to bring it forward. I don't see any harm in saying, let's move forward, offer this as a tool. If nobody takes the opportunity, that's fine. We're not telling Mr. Porter or anybody in that township, we're going to come crush your roads. That's not our goal. The resolution very specifically says the agreement has to come from the township. So I think that's, when I have township supervisors that, five of them that we've, that have mentioned this as a possibility, I don't want to take that tool out of their hands. I think that's a good thing moving forward. And we're going to stumble in timeframe if they want to get it done before the road building season is done this year. So we have the dollars available in the budget. We have the process, the ability to perform that procedure and restore that road. I think that's a good thing long-term for the residents who live on it, because obviously the townships are dealing with that. They're going to have a better surface to drive on. For us, we're going to spend less money because we're not trying to maintain something that we can't maintain. And safety, in public safety fashion, we're at a surface that we can maintain reasonably and provide a drivable surface that people can rely upon. So I'll be supporting it for that manner and for those reasons, because I think it is a township initiative and we have the ability to do it and get it done quickly. So. Is there any other discussion? Public, you can make a public comment later. Sorry. Sir, you got to wait until the next public comment time. Thanks. Sorry. All right. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Crispy?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
No.
Commissioner Hatcher?
No.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Motion fails. All right. Next item.
Yep. The last two items for tonight are financial statements for information only. Item twelve B five are the county's financial statements, so this is for seven months ended July. The agenda item starts on page one thirty-one, but based on the way that we attached the items, I would draw your attention to the memo that's on page one eighty-six, prepared by our deputy comptroller, Megan Banning, who's here tonight. So as you can see, it, we're seven months through the year, but we always point out that the county's main source of revenue, property taxes, really start to be collected starting in July and more so in August and September. So we're always upside down from a revenue expense standpoint until this point in the year. Actually, our property taxes look like they're a million dollars ahead of last year at this time, but it has to do with the state changing the payment schedule for our personal property tax reimbursement. So we didn't get our second payment last year until this year May, so it kind of gave us an additional million dollars in this year's budget. So just a timing issue. And then on the expense side, really the only thing that stands out is it does look like our salaries and fringes are high as a proportion of budget. For our fringe benefits, just so you know, we have to estimate fringe benefit claims because we're self-funded for health insurance, and we actually plug in and charge the departments a fixed amount throughout the whole year, and then we continue to monitor the claims and reconcile that. And if it looks like we have a lower actual cost than what was budgeted, we will do a mid-year or end-of-year adjustment to bring that back down to the actual cost. And we're cautiously optimistic this year that we may have a little bit of savings as we get towards the end of the year and that that variance will go away. And that's really all I would point out on the county general fund. And then you can see the summary of expenses and revenues for all of our other special revenue funds as well, and I would be happy to answer any questions, and so would Megan.
Can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County July twenty, two thousand nineteen financial statements for information only?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Support.
Support. Is there any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Last item under new business, twelve B six is on page one ninety-one. Financial statements for the road department. We do them separately because we maintain separate, actually, the road department has a separate set of software altogether, just as a reminder. So their funding is separate, but their general ledger is also separate. But similar format, we're seven months through the year, and the things that we always highlight on the road department's budget from a revenue standpoint are, the winter maintenance comes in beginning of the year and end of the year, two different phases. So we typically see half at the beginning, half at the end. This time of the year, for the next couple of months, you'll really see the expenditures for the structural improvements come in for the construction projects, and the ongoing maintenance for the summer. There's still some significant items that will be booked through July and August as we continue to do pothole patching and that kind of work. Our state funding is on a two-month lag, so even though this is a seven-month financial statement, there's only five months of the MTF funding in there, so that looks like it's a little low on a percentage basis. But all in all, the, we have revenues and expenses that are showing about three-point-seven-million-dollar use of the fund balance, and we've been pointing out, as we amended the budget, that it's the spend-down of the bond proceeds that were still on hand at the beginning of the year. So that's expected. We have to spend all of those bond proceeds on capital items, including paving projects between now and December. So nothing that concerns me with the road department financials.
Okay. Can I have a motion to accept the Calhoun County Road Department July two thousand nineteen financial statements for information only?
So moved.
Or support.
Have a motion, support. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' time, second citizens' time. Same rules apply as the first time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Anybody like to address?
Our township on M-
Can you state your name and?
Township, Walt Obrensky.
Hi, Walt.
Hi. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Okay, anyways, M Drive, last year, we had a little confusion on it. We had it on the agenda to get repaired, and it did not. So this year, we put it on, we had it all looped in, and they said it is too bad, and they're going to pulverize it. Now, that's what our township supervisor talked to Aaron Cummings, and that's what he got out of that. And he's not agreeing to that. I'm on the road committee. I know we didn't agree to it. So I want, I don't know why the bad trust is because of situations like that. They're going to pulverize our road, and we didn't want it pulverized.
Is it a primary or a local?
Local.
Okay.
So that's one of the reasons why we're here, because if the 509 passes, is that going to happen? You just pulverize a road when, you know, we're not in agreeance to it?
Any other comments? It's not a question-and-answer period, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone? All right. Commissioner's time. Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, aye. I'm sorry. Is it, was it Walt?
Walt.
Okay. I'm sorry, it was just so fast. Walt, can you tell me what township?
Clarence Township.
Clarence Township. Thank you.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chair. Attended the Southwest Michigan Alliance for Region Three SMART meeting at Allegan County on August seventh. It's a group of fourteen different counties. Commissioners get together and share ideas and have an overview of different things going on. Deana Bosworth from Michigan Association of Counties was on hand to talk about the budget status and certainly the looming deadline and likelihood of possibly a temporary funding budget to be expected because likely they won't be able to get it done by September thirtieth. Funding for the Indigene Defense Fund, it will be probably at the same level as it was last year, which we kind of, yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what she's expecting at this point in time. Revenue sharing is interesting for counties. The Senate's looking at a flat with virtually none, when you've got the governor at three percent, and I believe the House at two-point-three percent. So we'll see where that goes. Also, there was a little discussion on trial court funding commission report, which you might find that to be interesting, if you get a chance to take a look at that in terms of where they're headed with trial court funding. And then the possibility of a bill this year extending commissioner terms to four years versus the current two years, which is interesting as well. So just something to take into consideration as well. Also too, Robert Sarrow, from Allegan County Administrator, great guy, he had a presentation on leading high-performance environmental services. It was very impressive utilizing the different plan of varieties, plan-do-check-action principles, as well as using fishbone problem-solving and benchmarking data analysis. So it was very impressive in what he had put together and some of the issues that they had relative to issuing permits for septics and things of that nature, and how they were, had a very difficult time trying to meet all of the requirements in terms of, if they had a seven-day timeframe to return that permit back, they had as much as twenty-one days. They were way behind. So utilizing some of these methods, they were able to actually to significantly reduce the amount of time down to a five-to-seven day period. So it was very impressive. And then also, we had the opportunity to tour the sheriff's office and corrections area, which was occupied in two thousand and fourteen by Allegan County after they repurposed an old garment and furniture factory, which was interesting, at a total cost of nineteen million, which was about thirteen, they saved about thirteen million dollars by repurposing this. So it was interesting. We got to take a tour of the entire facility and I got to talk to some of the officers and the correction people. So it was, it was a very, it was a very good meeting. I would certainly suggest anybody that would like to go, obviously, the attendance is decent, but I would like to see some, if you get a chance to show up, that'd be wonderful because there's a lot of networking, a lot of communicating that goes on. And then, just real quickly, we had a great week so far at the Calhoun County Fair. Those of you that might have been out, we had an opportunity to honor veterans on Monday, kids' day on Tuesday, and our seniors on Wednesday. I was honored to serve lunch to about three-hundred-and-fifty seniors, which was great. Also had a chance to call some bingo numbers, which is always fun. So if they're not getting their bingo numbers, believe me, it gets real pressure, high pressure. So that was a great event, but overall, it's been a great week out there at the Calhoun County Fair. If you get a chance, certainly take an opportunity to do so. Thank you, Chair. Appreciate it.
Did, was there a sponsor of that bill for the, at the time?
We asked that question, and she wasn't able to give us who the sponsors were on that bill yet.
Be interesting to follow up with it.
Absolutely. But they, but their goal was, I'm sorry, by the end of the year, to try to have that bill in place.
So that would require a two-thirds vote of both houses because they'll have to override the Constitution?
That's correct. So, it's just interesting. That was interesting that we put, yeah.
Commissioner King?
Thank you. Walt, to address your public comment, I'd be happy to try to get those answers for you. Just so you know, under the current policy for pulverizing a road, it doesn't involve any input whatsoever. If the road department wants to pulverize the road, they're going to go pulverize the road. None of us think that's a good idea, and we feel that the best way to right that ship is in the, you know, almost like a dictator move like that would be to include the townships, which is exactly what we tried to do with the policy 509 that got tabled. And again, the, none of my townships had any problem with, with the policy 509, but it got tabled, which I look at tabling as, most of the time, is just kicking the can down the road for longer, but that's a whole nother story. I'm sorry that happened to you. I'll gladly get the information for you to, so we can figure out why. But just keep in mind, under the old policy, under the new policy, it would require you guys to get together and come up with a solution, but then it would still come to this board to yea or nay a road getting pulverized. So if all your residents don't want it pulverized, and all your, your township board doesn't want it pulverized, and then you talk to us commissioners and say, we don't want it pulverized, we have, we would have to completely trump what, what you all are saying that you don't want. I mean, that's not, it's not what we work for, but it's okay. Lastly, I'd like to congratulate Jason Bomea. He's the new appointee from, from Governor Whitmer to the district court. Jason Bomea has been, he's a great man. He's a good lawyer from Marshall. He gets around and knows a lot of people, and congratulations to him on his, his new appointment. I think that, you know, there was several county folks that, that submitted their name for appointment, and I don't think the governor could have went wrong with any of those names. We've seen a lot of great work out of, out of them, so. But I would like to congratulate now Judge Bomea in his new seat.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Move on. Claims payable. Have a motion to approve the claims payable for July twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen through August eighth, two thousand and nineteen, amount of two million, four hundred and fifty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-one, one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and twenty-one cents, as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion, support. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll call.
Commissioner Crispy?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Section two.
Motion carries. Announcements. Mr. Tompkins?
Thank you, Chair. Just real quickly tonight, just one announcement. Walt, the Beat of Albion is back again this year on August twenty-fourth from one to five p.m. on Superior Street and Michigan Avenue. Over thirty musical artists and over twenty visual artists will be on hand for a great afternoon. The admissions fee, you get to walk down and see all the different, certainly the musicians performing. It's really a great event. If you get a raffle ticket, you got a chance to win potentially three thousand dollars. So it's a really great event. You get an opportunity to come out. And I just want to make one reference to what Mr. Obrensky was saying relative to that M Drive, what he's talking about. And I've talked to Bob Fisher, who's the supervisor regarding that. Basically, the township had initiated that there was certain sections of the road that they wanted done. And then obviously, the one section that what they wanted done was deemed to be not possible to be saved, and then was, a different section of the road was paved. I'm just telling you, that's what I heard. I'm not, you know, I'm just telling you. And that's the reason why there was the discontent there. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Obrensky, to make? That's the reason why, I just wanted to clarify, that was the specific reason why he saw it as, we want it here. It was deemed to be non-reparable. There was no way that we're going to be able to, if you're, and I understand that if they wanted that section, that they would have to pay a hundred percent for that. I was indicated that was the explanation that was given. So then it was moved to a different section, and that was the reason for the agitation that was, that was arisen. So that's how I understand.
All of the section, all of the contractor.
Can you address that, John?
Yeah.
Can you address that? What did you just say?
Yeah, the, it was the contractors for some skip paving out there, and the limits, I'm sorry, I don't remember, but A to B, and somewhere in those, that limits where all that asphalt went. And it turned out really nice where they did it. The part that he's referring to, and it's been discussed with the supervisor, one of the trustees, I believe, I'm sorry, I'm not sure who's in the office, it's clerk, the, who's ever that-
Oh, Cheryl Protow, did you, the clerk?
I didn't have the discussion, but it's been discussed, explained to them, that's what happened. That road was passed, just putting asphalt on it a year or two, and it's going to be all busted up again because the base is basically gone of it. So we said we, I've told staff, I said, they want to do something like that where we know it's not going to hold up, we're not going to put road department dollars into it, but if the township wants to pay the full cost, then we would enter into a contract. And I would say right in the contract, we're not recommending it due to these conditions. So that's what that one's all about.
Thanks for explaining that.
And if you have time, you're all done, I would like to address the board again on something else.
Okay. Mr. Miller?
I just want to make an announcement. The fair, you already said, we've got two more days of the fair. Come on out, get your elephant here. There's a livestock auction tomorrow for all the four-aging youth kids. And the thing is, most schools are starting next week. Watch out for the school buses and the red lights.
Good idea. Commissioner King?
So I just had a quick question back for John. So what you're saying is, M Drive and Clarence, that Walt was talking about, is, let's just call it a junk road, and it needed to be fixed up a little bit. So there's, so it's what?
I said, we fixed worse W Drive, the way worse, and we repaired it.
Okay, so that-
And the first road, the township did not repair it. And that's what the contract said, from patch road to twenty-four mile road, and it didn't get repaired. It moved down, down M Drive, far from finish it. So we need to get, and we call a lot of the old bank five thousand dollars more, and he didn't give it, he said there's more, but we didn't have no say.
No.
That's what was told.
Okay. What, what John addressed is?
That's not what was told to the supervisor. The, what was told is that needed to be pulverized to get, reestablish the base, and then we could pave on it. We were not going to go in there and pulverize it. There was never any intent for us to just go in and start pulverizing roads. We've not done that. We're not going to do that without township agreement, so.
So there may be some miscommunication between the supervisor and the rest of the township folks?
Yeah.
Is a possibility? Okay. Thanks. All right. I think we've completed our agenda, unless anybody else has any comments. John, did you want to address this one more time?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you an update. We've-